One regular meeting of the Pines Village Council. All the council members and several staff are present tonight for this meeting. And the regular meeting will be followed by a work session where we'll be talking about issues in a council open discussion. If you're in Village Hall right now, there are agendas behind you on the table. If you wish to follow along, they'll also be on the screens here in the room. And for those of you who may be listening to this regular meeting tonight on the live stream, if you want to make a comment or bring something to the attention of the Village Council, you're welcome to send an email to us. Those emails will be received by the Village Clerk. We will not discuss them, but they will be circulated to Village Council and appropriate staff over the next couple of days. So with that, those public comments can be messaged to publiccomments@vopnc.org. That's publiccomments@vopnc.org. With that, and having called the meeting to order, our first item of business tonight will be reports from the Village Manager and members of the Village Council. And I'll start with Jeff Sandborn, the Village Manager. Jeff?
Thank you, John. I'd just like to comment on one thing, and that is the strategic retreat process that we just went through, and this is for the benefit of the public. The council spent a fair amount of time over the last couple of weeks, one day, two weeks ago, and then two days last week, going through our strategic retreat process. And the whole intent behind that is to allow the council to, the opportunity to analyze where we are and where we want to go, and set priorities and issue guidance to the staff that helps us in the effort that we'll be undertaking over the next several months in developing the next five-year plan that goes into the Strategic Operating Plan that will be published next June. I think it was very successful. Of note, and as is always the case, what we got the council to do primarily was to refine the balance scorecard and select areas of focus from the balance scorecard objectives, and also update and identify new opportunities for improvement that we will be addressing in that five-year plan that we're developing.
Jeff, thank you very much. Before I make a couple of comments on meetings I've had in the last few weeks, I did want to mention to those of you here in Village Hall, if you wish to speak tonight and make public comments to the Village Council at the end of the regular meeting, there is a sign-up sheet, I think still in the rear of the room, and please sign your name to that. The Village Clerk will pick that up momentarily, and I'll use that in guiding those discussions later on. Reports from myself include a meeting of the Tri-Cities Working Group on November 30. That is a group that includes the towns of Aberdeen, Southern Pines, and Pinehurst, our Village Managers, members of the councils, to try to coordinate activities and develop common plans. Jeff Sandborn suggested at that meeting that the three towns start to look at ways to coordinate and cooperate with respect to road resurfacing. And so I think the Village Managers and appropriate staff are looking into that opportunity for cost savings and efficiencies going forward. Just one of the benefits of having a Tri-Cities Work Group, which is a key part of some of our planning and coordination with our neighbors. The second report I'll make tonight is from a meeting of the Partners in Progress, the Moore County Development Organization, which met by Zoom on December 7. Couple of key issues coming out of that. The effort to stimulate business opportunity in Moore County, whether it's here in the south part of the county or in other parts, continues to be focused on what we'll call the golf cluster. And that is businesses related to the golf industry. We already have several here. There are others who may wish to come into Moore County, not necessarily in Pinehurst, Southern Pines, and Aberdeen, but in other places of the county. And so that golf cluster idea is the key, one of the key operating concepts at Partners in Progress at the current time. And the other comment I'll make from that meeting, and you'll be hearing more about this, there is going to be a broadband internet survey really available to all members, all residents in Moore County. And you'll be hearing a great deal more about this hopefully in the next month or two. But I encourage all of you now, if you receive the survey or get information about that survey, please complete it. It's rather extraordinarily important because we have a wide range of broadband availability or lack thereof, the emphasis being on the latter, the lack thereof. And one of the ways we can improve that is to respond to the survey, give the folks that are administering the survey information on where our strengths and weaknesses are, quite literally, and try to do better. It's amazing to my, when I reflected on the report that was made, that even here in Pinehurst, you can go to certain parts of the village or just over our borders, and broadband capability is next to nothing, and cell service is not very strong. And I think we can do a lot better than that, and it's very important for our quality of life and the development of our residential services here and commercial services. So that'll be coming along. You'll hear more about that through the county, but I wanted to make that report today. Moving along into other reports from council members, Lydia, do you have any reports to make tonight?
I do, John. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Have three things. First, from the Convention Visitors Bureau, by any measure, actual occupancy in Moore County lodging facilities and our occupancy tax revenues are just off the chart, going through the roof, successful. And the CVP says the reason is golf, golf, golf. Also, with the 2022 U.S. Women's Open coming to Pine Needles this year, golf will be getting plenty of public relations in this destination for months to come. Also, and this is pretty neat, the CVP is working closely with USGA to add significant events for residents, visitors, and ticket holders the week of the U.S. Women's Open, which I believe is the first week of June. So there's more to come as we get more information on that. Second, the Beautification Committee, many, many thanks to the Beautification Committee for all of their hard work in getting this village so gorgeous for Christmas. The women on the committee worked to get all the wreaths downtown in shape to be hung. And also, another thing they've done is they have spearheaded contests for the best decorations, best home decorations in Pinehurst. And Jeff Patton, do you know when that contest is?
I told you the judging.
Yeah, the judging, what the committee did is they broke down Pinehurst into regions, and the members of the committee went around to each region to see every home and come up with recommendations for the judges, for the final judging. And so I think the final judging might be this week, and it'll probably be announced on social media, Jeff Sandborn. I'm not sure how the winner is announced. But anyway, they've worked really hard on that. And so a special thanks to Dee Johnson and to Janet Farrell for heading up all of that. And last, Jeff Morgan would not toot this horn, I'm sure, but his wife was selected, what, Miss Senior America 2021? And when is this the first time North Carolina's ever had a winner?
Yeah, out of 42 years in the pageant, that's the first time North Carolina's ever brought it home.
Like I said, I'm sure Jeff wouldn't toot that horn, but we're all really proud of Laura. So congratulations to Laura. That's it, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Patrick and Jeff don't have official assignments to our stakeholders, collaborators, and committee persons yet, so I won't call on them unless you have something specific to add. I'll go to Jane Hogeman for your reports, please.
No reports.
Nothing there, fine. Jeff, you all right? Jeff, I think we're all set then with those reports. Thank you very much. The next item of business is moving to our consent agenda. I would like to have a motion to approve that, subject to any further discussion that a council member has on content of that material or any questions about that tonight. Are there any? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I move to approve all the items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
Motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Patrick Brazella. Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Move on into item number four on our agenda tonight, which is a discussion and consideration of a resolution to reappoint Mr. John Taylor to the Historic Preservation Commission. Jeff?
Not much to add on that, John. I don't see John in the audience here, but he's been serving very, with distinction on the HPC for, through his first term, and now we have a recommendation for you to reappoint him to a second term.
I know Mr. Taylor. I wasn't expecting him to be here tonight, but he was serving over these last few years and wishes to be renominated. So that's good, by my point of view. Are there any questions from council members on that nomination and reappointment?
I move to approve Resolution 2131, reappointment of John Taylor to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Aye, second.
That's a motion by Patrick Brazella, and the second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Move on into a little more complicated part of our agenda tonight. Item number five, this is a discussion and consideration, or really a presentation, of our fiscal year-end 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And we have Brooke Hunter and our esteemed representative from Dixon Hughes here tonight. Jeff, any further introduction from you or she?
I think you got it, John.
All right, did that well, okay.
Perfect. I'll introduce him.
Over to you, thank you.
Absolutely. We come to you tonight with the presentation of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021. These financial statements have been prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and have been audited in accordance with government auditing standards by an independent firm of licensed CPAs, Certified Public Accountants. Mr. John Frank with Dixon Hughes-Gobin is here with us. He is the partner on the engagement, and he will present the firm's opinion. Included with your copy of the financial statements was also a second document that is required by professional auditing standards, and that's your report to council. And that just explains the auditor's responsibilities as well as management's responsibilities required under generally accepted auditing standards. So at this time, I'll pass it over to Mr. John Frank to present the firm's opinion and some highlights from the financial statements.
All right. Thank you, Brooke. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you allowing me to come by this afternoon to discuss the audit and answer any questions you might have about the fiscal year-end results and the audit. Just had a few comments I'd like to make. I guess first and foremost, we did, again, issue a modified or clean audit report as a result of our audit. And also this year, the village received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So that's an award that the village has received for many years running, which, you know, I think points to the quality of the financial statements, which are produced by the village staff. So that's something to be very proud of. Just to point out a few financial highlights related to the village's general fund, the general fund, fund balance increased by $2.1 million this year. This increase was a result of several factors. First, there was an increase in property tax revenues of $229,000 as a result of a continued strong collection rate, as well as continuing increases in the tax base, the value of taxable property. Sales tax revenues were up $718,000 this year in spite of the pandemic, or perhaps because of the pandemic, there was more shopping and, you know, and the state has done a better job of monitoring sales taxes on online sales. So that all, you know, went to the benefit of the village this year. Restricted revenues were up about $213,000, primarily due to the receipt of a COVID relief fund grant. Revenues from building permits and inspection fees were also up again this year. They were up by about $102,000, again, as a result of continued building activity in both the commercial and residential sectors. A couple of revenue categories did go down this year. The category of other general fund revenues was down. If you might recall, in fiscal 2020, there was a large $1 million grant that was returned to the village for library expansion, you know, which never took place. And also, investment earnings were down this year by about $157,000, you know, of course, due to interest rates being pretty close to zero in this environment. And also, operating and capital expenditures were lower than amounts budgeted this year. At the end of fiscal 2021, the total fund balance of the general fund amounted to $13.3 million. Of this total, unassigned general fund balance was $2.9 million. As you know, the village has a policy of maintaining a minimum unassigned fund balance of 15% of actual general fund expenditures. And your policy also states the total fund balance should be at at least 30% of budgeted general fund expenditures. Currently, the village unassigned fund balance, or at least as of the end of the fiscal year, was equal to 15% of actual general fund expenditures. So that's right on target with your policy. The total fund balance is equal to 58% of budget expenditure, so you are above that minimum 30% threshold. By comparison, the average fund balance for the village's peer group is right around 54%, so you're very close to that average for your peer group, being at 58%. One other noteworthy item is that the village did pay off its only outstanding installment debt obligation this year. So as of the end of the fiscal year, the village has no outstanding installment or bonded debt. In addition to our report on the financial statements, we also issued a report on internal control over financial reporting. And in this report, we just basically are stating that we didn't become aware of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, and we did not become aware of any material instances of noncompliance with certain provisions of regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. So again, a clean report on compliance. As Brooke mentioned, we also issued a separate report outside of the audit report, a required communications report to the board. And basically, in this report, we state that we had no significant audit findings, we didn't encounter any difficulties in performing the audits, and had no material unanticipated audit adjustments as a result of the work we did. Just looking down the road, there is an accounting pronouncement which you may be aware of. It's GASB 87. It's what's referred to as the new leasing standard. And without going into a lot of details, it basically will require the village to put on its balance sheet any operating leases that you may have just expensed in the past, if it turns out that those leases are in fact material. You know, if the village completes its assessment, determines that the, you know, asset liability related to those leases is insignificant, then the village may opt to, you know, pass on recording that, those amounts. But basically, it will involve looking at all your leases, which, I'm not aware of any significant operating leases that the village has, but you do have a lot of small ones for copiers and office equipment. So, but it's my understanding that Brooke and her team are actively determining the impact of this new standard. One other thing to probably point out, if you get a chance to look at the statements, this is on page 42 of the financial statements in the footnote section. This is a summary of long-term obligations of the village, including the obligations under elders and the law enforcement officers' separation allowance. As you can see, or you may be aware, on the entity-wide statements, the village is required to report its long-term obligation under these pension plans. And this is not, these liabilities don't represent some of this currently due, but will be due over time. It basically represents your share of the state's pension obligation. And, you know, as a North Carolina municipality, you're required to report your share of this kind of, of this actuarially determined liability. And, I mean, you may or not be looking at this, but just for reference, at the beginning of fiscal 2021, the village's share of the state's liability for elders amounted to $2,756,000. And it actually went up by about $980,000 this year, and at the end of the year is $3,736,000. And the Leo liability was $1,243,000 at the beginning of the year. It increased by $443,000, and now amounts to $1,687. So, you know, you basically have over $5 million of liabilities, which are recorded on your statement of, you know, net position in the entity-wide statements. It certainly is not a liability that's going to be due anytime soon, but it just represents the, for the present value of this future obligation. And, you know, one thing we were discussing before the meeting is something that you're also probably aware of, is that the village's contribution requirements will go up over the next five years. Not a real expert on why this, why the actuaries determined why this liability should increase so much this year, but I think it has a lot to do with revisions to the mortality tables. Basically, retirees are living longer, which results in a bigger liability, and the number of anticipated retirements going up. So nothing to, you know, be concerned of in the short term, other than the fact that that annual budgeted contribution to the state plans will go up over the, you know, over the next few years and perhaps beyond. I think those are the only comments I had. Be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
John, thanks very much, and thanks especially for answering the question we were chatting about before the meeting on pensions. It came up on our retreat last week for our fiscal year '23 planning. And in spite of the fund, the state pension fund being very significantly in equities, and equity market's doing very well right now, I was surprised about the increases that we'll see and all municipalities will see. And I think you've given an interesting explanation of that, on the mortality tables, which are getting better, and that's a good thing. So we'll make sure we pay our share, that's for sure.
Right. And even though the markets have done very well this year, they look at a long-term estimated return. And I know a few years ago, when the markets were in the doldrum, I think they were still projecting a return of maybe around 8%, which back in, you know, a few years ago, didn't look achievable. And now it looks pretty mediocre by comparison. So, you know, those assumptions could change over time, but the big assumption that I think they changed this year was the life expectancy, which drove that number up.
Well, Brooke does a great job and her team of keeping us appraised of not only how we're doing, but also trends. And we appreciate the fact that she can depend on your firm and you to guide us in these questions as we go forward. The other general question I had, and I think other council members may have some specific questions, you talked about the leasing, the change in the leasing requirement, and again, Brooke had started to talk to us about that several months ago. Maybe not on the books yet, but are there other changes such as that that are maybe coming along or under discussion that we should be aware of, early on anyway, that would affect us perhaps compared to other municipalities?
That's really the only forthcoming standard that I think the village should be concerned with. I mean, unless you're thinking of something else, Brooke. I mean, the, you know, the GASB is always issuing new standards, but some of them apply to very specific transactions that in many instances don't apply to, you know, smaller governments.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And there are some other GASB standards that are being talked about but are not finalized yet. But there have been some discussions about changing the reporting model, but that's down the road several years and not finalized yet.
Thank you. I'm anticipating there may be some other questions. You talked a great bit about fund balance, and we discussed a lot about fund balance in our meetings last week, and we're dealing with our policies on that and trying to keep the village fiscally very responsible. But there may be other questions about that or things tonight. Anybody have questions from council? Patrick?
Yeah, I do. Other than the item you just mentioned, the GASB.
87.
Yeah. Are there any other things that you would alert us to as sort of, and I'll use the phrase, a yellow flag, not a red flag? It's something we should look out for in the three to five-year period?
Well, I mean, in terms of, you know, additional reporting requirements and things like that, you know, like I said, I'm not aware of anything that would have a real significant impact, you know, at least in the foreseeable future. You know, as we mentioned, probably your pension contributions will be up, not down. But I'm not. Can you think of anything, Brooke, that's on the horizon that concerns you?
No. The only other thing I will mention, too, in terms of the GASB standards, you know, this leasing model, leasing requirement is effective for fiscal year '22, so the one we're currently in, so we'll have to address that this year. There is something that may be a very similar standard related to IT-related subscription-based contracts, that very similar concepts to this lease standard that we may have to address. And I believe it's a year or two out from that.
Does the lease standard deal with both real and personal property, or is it just one?
Yes, real and personal.
So it's copiers as well as land?
Copy your postage machine, that's right.
But basically, any leasing agreement that has a term of over a year.
That's right.
On the area of interest we received, a declining amount, you said it was $150,000 decline this year over last, the year before, the interest rates were low also. So I'm trying to understand what drove it further down.
Yeah.
I can speak to that a bit. So we have previously been invested in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, both the term portfolio and the government portfolio, and just a very similar in nature, but they're invested in slightly different portfolios. And so typically, the term portfolio carried a slightly higher interest rate, very liquid fund, that we could pull money out and access it the next day. However, with the pandemic, when the Fed reduced interest rates to near zero, zero to 0.25%, it drove the rates of both of those portfolios down to near zero. And so what, we may have been earning 2% or 2.5% on those funds, we dropped to below a quarter of a percent for those pieces. And the Capital Management Trust actually ended the term portfolio because it was no longer profitable for customers or for clients. And so they may, they've indicated an interest in offering something similar if interest rates change and when interest rates change.
And help me, or educate me, you mentioned liquidity advantage of this. What is the decision-making chain there for that liquidity? Is there a brokerage advice that we receive professionally? Do we go to the state government? How do we, how do we make that termination?
Sure. That's, it's an internal decision that we're able to make. You know, we do abide by our investment policy that is safety, liquidity, yield, in that order. And so we make recommendations, for example, I would make a recommendation to Doug, the assistant manager, who would ultimately, we may reach out to Jeff Sandborn as well if we choose to pursue various investments. In the past, we've done certificates of deposits, CDs, things like that, but that is just an internal decision.
The options come to the council, or there's a final decision?
Not typically, not typically. But the policy itself, you know, is approved by you all. So if it's something that we wanted to alter the investment policy, we certainly could. We're very restricted in what we are able to invest in anyway as a local government.
It's pretty, there are not a lot of choices there.
There are not. You're right. There are not many options.
Under state guidelines, and that's been a good thing for the state of North Carolina.
That's right. Protects the funds. That's right. Protects the funds, but that's why yield is third in that safety, liquidity, yield component.
Maybe a question more, Mr. Frank here, on the, has there been what I'll call the COVID impact on actuarial projections? Is there anything the actuary community is doing regarding the, you know, COVID 800,000 deaths? I'm just wondering, what does the community look like?
I think they look at all factors, you know, such as that. Of course, they have a very long-term vision.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're usually lagging behind somewhat. I mean, the, you know, the projection of the life expectancy are, you know, not adjusted daily, they're adjusted infrequently, the tables are adjusted infrequently. But, you know, not being an actuary, I can't, can't give you the correct answer, but my guess is that they, they would look into all those factors and, you know, maybe the probability of future pandemics. I'm sure that, you know, they take all those, those factors into account. I'm sure that, you know, they take all those, those factors into account.
Last thing again, for my educational purposes, we have no debt now. When we, or any community, I guess, makes a decision to issue debt, what is the logistical process that a community needs to go through?
Well, I know the Local Government Commission maintains very, you know, strict control over that process in this state in particular. I mean, I, you could probably walk through the steps better than I can.
I mean, we have to go to the state, what do we, who has to sign off?
Sure, it depends on what it's for. There's, so there is a flow chart, a very extensive flow chart that the LGC provides, the Local Government Commission provides, that you have to map out to see, okay, is this a rolling stock item? Is this a, you know, a fire truck? If so, you don't have to have their approval. However, if it's for real property of a certain value, you have to get their approval. And so we do walk through the flow chart to determine whether or not LGC approval is required. And when it is, it does have to be presented to them along with a packet of information, has to be presented to them, and they would have to approve it at one of their board meetings before we could issue debt.
How's that so?
I think we looked at it before, and it's, it could be three.
Three to six months?
Three to six months.
It's not a, it doesn't take a few years for this?
Right, no, it doesn't, it doesn't. But you do have to have a plan in place for what it's going to be used for, the estimated cost of the project itself, and some bids from banks, things like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Other questions from members of the village council? Lydia? Jane? Jeff? All right. Thank you very much, John. Good to see you here. Safe travels. We'll look forward to seeing you next year or in the interim as might be necessary. You're helpful.
Well, thank you very much for having me, and also a big thank you to Brooke and her staff for making the audit process go so smoothly this year and past years as well.
Thanks to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
That will move us to item number six on the agenda, which is an update on the status of the fiscal year 2022, which is the year we're in now, our strategic operating plan. Matt McKeerhan is here to guide us a bit through that. Good evening, Matt. I know you gave us a little update just before the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you again. Yes, an update to the update. So, today I'm here to present the first quarter results of fiscal year 21, 2022's strategic operating plan. And so the packet that you have in front of you that's printed, it's very similar to the one that was before, but we did add one more sheet onto the back end just for further conversation as well. So, this update covers the timeframe of July 1st, 2021, through, up to September 30th, 2021. And as a reminder, and I think this will be fresh in everyone's mind after our meetings last week, that village council adopts a strategic operating plan, which indicates the village's plans to achieve its vision and its mission. In addition, we use a balanced scorecard approach to measure our performance. And so this year's strategic operating plan includes five initiative action plans, or IAPs, scheduled for this year. And historically, this has happened right prior to the, to the strategic retreat and the November meeting due to circumstances this year, where we are providing that to you this time. So, just as a reminder, when we go through this, you may be asking yourself, you know, didn't we look at these opportunities for improvements in depth, and did we make some potential changes for next year? And the answer is yes. However, we are still, you know, at this time, still working within the FY '22 plan, and so those updates would be reflected in FY '23, and then that strategic operating plan. So, if you, I'll turn to page three for me in your packet. You will find the new information about the first quarter strategic opportunities that were assigned, again, during the FY '22 strategic planning retreat from council. That list is in front of you here today. It's highlighted in two different ways. The first list of '22 OFIs, or opportunities for improvement, start in FY '22. And then the remaining OFIs that start in FY '23, again, as adopted in the FY '22 strategic operating plan, is at the, is on actually page five, I believe. Yes, on page five. You may have also noticed on page three that the first five items that are highlighted in red under OFI are the initiative action plan items, again, that were identified and adopted. Within this document, you're going to be able to see the name of the opportunity for improvement, as well as the type, the year span in which it's supposed to be starting, and the year it's supposed to be concluding, and then any notes from the first quarter. So, as we look through this, as a general overview for the first, for all the opportunities for improvement that you see in front of you and their notes, in general, those that were supposed to start in FY '22, again, according to, by the end of September 30th, 10 were already in progress, and 10 of them had not yet started, either because they were not scheduled to be started or for some reason have pushed out to another quarter. As we walk through, I would just want to also highlight briefly that on page six, we further break down specifically the initiative action plan items that were identified in the strategic operating plan. And so just through your notes, again, there were five that were identified. And through September 30th, two of them were in progress but not on schedule due to the tasks that were assigned at that time. One was in progress and on schedule, which means that the tasks that were assigned at that time have been completed. And then there are two that were identified as future quarter opportunities for improvement, which means, and in this case, actually, both of them were scheduled to start in the second quarter. You're also saying underneath that, along with all of our initiative action plans, we also have assigned metrics, and we ensure that we are trying, that we meet our metrics in order to understand whether or not we're meeting our targets. So, there, out of the five, four of them have achieved their projected performance so far for Q1, and one currently has not met its targets. Now, as we go through this, and I did go through this relatively quickly, but I do know that we spent quite a bit of time, again, talking through them and having some updates during the conversation last week, that through these initiative action plans, right now, the two that are in progress but not on schedule were the initiative action plan associated with the PDO at that time, as well as the small area plan. The one that's currently in progress and on schedule was the comprehensive stormwater master plan initiative action plan item. And then the two that were assigned for future quarter OFI, and although, as I'll mention here, it's a future quarter OFI, both of them have started in Q2, which means technically they are being worked on now, were downtown parking and library services. So, as we, as we've gone through those, I just also wanted to quickly mention that FY, we are currently in Q2 of the FY '22 strategic operating plan, and we will be working on providing you all with, and which ends, by the way, at the end of December. We will, again, get together as a staff to discuss our Q2 results with the quarterly strategy session, and then after that happens, we will come to you with the Q2 SOP or strategic operating plan update. And that'll be scheduled tentatively for the first week of February, the first meeting in February, but I'm going to confirm that as well. So, with that, that's my conclusion for the FY '22 Q1 strategic operating plan update. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
So, Matt, just to be clear.
Yes.
Which, where are we lagging, and are we going to make up, make up that time?
So, currently, the, so the two that we're looking at for currently not, that are currently being worked on but not on schedule.
Right.
Are the PDO.
Development, PDO, and the village placing small area plans, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so as of right now, in fact, I'm working on trying to get, we're just working on the updates and where we're at for Q2 as well.
So, this is, this just, this is as of September 30.
September 30.
And we're now December 14.
Yes, sir.
Meaning that when we hear from you in a couple of months about the December 30 date, things probably are up to date by then, I would hope, or that, is that likely to be true?
I don't expect that we're going to be on schedule for either one of those tasks.
Okay.
At the end of next quarter.
And, and obviously, this comes back to our continuing emphasis and concern, which is the planning department and the lot of projects they have to do, and both of these are in their court, so.
And they're all, they're all kind of, they all sequentially build on one another, and I think you all are aware that, you know, the lengthy and meaty engagement we've had on the small area plans, and in particular, you know, the effort to go back and make some significant refinements to the Pinehurst South Small Area Plan is a little more delay in that process, so.
Those changes were, of course, suggested by the council, I think so.
And us, and then staff, so, yeah, we're trying to get there to produce the best results that we can.
Also mentioned, at the last page, and this was added, and it's on the screen currently as well, provides a little bit more in-depth information. It gives the Q1 comments as to where we were at at the time of September 30th, 2021. It also provides you with the actual initiative action plan metric that we are using to measure success, as well as our actuals and then our goals at those times. So, that provides at least a little bit more of an insight into where we're currently at and where we hope to be.
So, my assumption on the timeline is that we've got a permanent phase shift until completion, correct? Kind of like a construction project, you're delayed 30 days, then it's going to be delayed to 30 days until you get the, get the final project, so, okay. Thanks.
Other questions from council members on this update? Patrick?
Yeah, just one, the FY '22 initiative action plan metrics as of September 30th, which is the did not achieve target results? There's just one, we hit four of them on time, which is the one there?
The one that's in red?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, that was the one, that's the number of PDO sections drafted and presented to.
Oh, that is PDO. I thought the PDO was, I'm sorry, obviously, there's two charts here. I had the PDO and the not on schedule.
Oh, yes.
As opposed to achieve projected performance.
Yes, so on the next page, I believe it breaks it down a little bit further, just with the red, so you can see how, in the first column, the IAP status one is, is reflected on the top section, and then the next column, the one that says YTD actual, is related to the bottom section for metrics. So, that's how the reds and greens and yellows and blacks are highlighted.
So, the, the one item is also PDO, is what you're saying to me, is right?
Yes, so the PDO is both in progress and not on schedule, so that's why it's in red, as well as it is not meeting its metric at the end of September 30th.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Now, I want to be sure I understand the last chart, the year-to-date actual numbers, is the number on the small area plan of 282, is that the number of participants who attended the meetings versus, versus 25, which is what we thought?
So, this is actually all who attended meetings or viewed the information on our Engage Pinehurst platform.
Okay, so these were, these were the engaged folks, so to speak, 282?
They were both, yes. They, either were, yes.
And the, and the 364 represents the same number of engaged, or?
The 364 is in relation to the number of parking spaces downtown. So, that one is related to the.
That is a precise number that now exists?
Oh, at the end of September 30th, that was the one that existed. It did not, and I know that, for instance, down on Magnolia, they're, they are doing some additions, but those would not be counted in these numbers.
So, now, okay, existing now. And requests are requests from citizens on my BOP numbers?
Yes, that'd be 25, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members of Matt? Seeing none, Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Good report. That'll move us to item number seven on the regular meeting agenda, which is any other business. Are there other business items that council members would wish to discuss or put forward for another meeting? Anything? Seeing none there, that'll move us, Pat?
One question, and I'm further educating myself, whether this is the proper time to raise this or not. In the past, there's been a discussion about the Fort Bragg issue of their name and all.
Right.
Is that something we discuss now, or is that something we discuss?
We're going, good point, and Doug and I are working on that. We're going to bring that forward in, at the January meeting. Just as tonight, a little bit later, we'll be talking about the anniversary plans for Ross and Olmsted. We're going to talk about General Marshall in January.
And then the other item is you, you mentioned, must have been one of those two days we were all together, about having the folks from, I think it was Three Rivers, brief us. So, is that something you're going to be scheduling in the near future?
I'm going to work with Jeff on that, yeah.
That and the parking list, and yeah, we'll be, it's not scheduled yet, but.
Right.
Came up this afternoon, actually, but as an example of something we need to schedule in a future work session.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other inquiries from council? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, comments from attendees. Are there any persons signed up tonight? And if you're not signed up, I'm happy to hear your comments. I see someone, Colette? Let me see if there's anybody. Did you sign the list, actually? Hang on one second, please. Okay.
To keep.
Please identify yourself by name and address, please.
Buck Klinsky, 25, Queens Court. To keep this concise, I will read it. I would like to thank Judy, Jane, and John for passing a protective triordens, and Darren's group for the work they did on it. What is, I find disturbing is individual commentary, the property rights should be protected when the individuals feel safely protected by page upon page of an HOA stating what property owners can and cannot do. Our North Carolina municipalities who do not have the wherewithal to go to Raleigh, and protect their areas from undesirable real estate practices because they do not belong to an HOA or a heritage site. May I remind Pinewild residences that just a few years ago, they amassed in this room to ask the council and the community for property protection from an owner who was attempting to bypass the HOA. Perhaps, good morning, America, need not go all the way to the Amazon Rainforest to show the clear-cutting devastation, but could come to North Carolina and ask legislators to explain why they keep sponsoring bills giving relatively clear-cutting the green light. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the room wishes to make a public comment to the village council tonight? Yes, ma'am? Do you identify yourself by name and address, please? Thank you.
I will keep it within three minutes, sir.
Excuse me?
You always remind me, three minutes.
Three minutes, thank you.
I apologize if I didn't.
Can you give us your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
I have a big voice, I wish everyone else did, then I could hear you all. I didn't see anything, and perhaps it's inappropriate for it to be on that report, about short-term rentals. And the task force has met with several of you to let you know our concerns about the safety and the tranquility of this beautiful community that we live in. We don't have short-term rental overviews. We don't have short-term rental ordinances, and we should. With the coming of the ladies open, they, they are having a tremendous amount of advertising of short-term rentals. With the coming of the men's U.S. Open in several years, we're going to be swamped. And I see always charming, vibrant, we need to promote that. And we're not going to be charming, but we will be vibrant. And if you're living next to one of those short-term rental vibrant nights, you'll want an ordinance also. I hope that you will put it on your schedule very early, because we are being swamped by advertising and by potential short-term rentals. And please, for those of you who are listening, this is not an attempt to take away the rights of the person who owns the property. All that we're asking is that there is a guideline so that they understand the rights and the privileges they have as, as owners of that property, but also to respect the neighbors and their rights. We have a tremendous amount of young people living in this community now. We need to protect them. They need to be able to be out in their yards in the evening. They need to be safe in their homes and in their neighborhoods. And if we continue to do what I see happening over the last 20 years, Pinehurst that I knew is going to disappear. We don't need to become totally commercial, and there's a great deal of pressure by the resorts to see that happen, to grow the golfing community, et cetera. That's great, that's why many of us came here. But to live next to a short-term rental gives you an education. I'll give you a night at our home if you'd like to see what it's like. Also, very quickly, you're talking about taking. Also, very quickly, you're talking about taking a look at the southern development up by us. I would hope that you would take very seriously what is happening with traffic in our area, and that we are bumper to bumper from my intersection on Lake Hills Road, very often right through the village and almost to Olmstead. If the development continues in the south end that is Pinehurst, and then Aberdeen continues to talk about 500, 600, 700 homes on five, we are going to be stricken with the inability to get out of our properties. And that's not, that's a safety issue. So I hope that you will, you will put that primary on, on your schedule and take a look at that before you allow too much more development up there because this is not an easy task to solve, especially with the limitations on five. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just make one response. Actually, at last week's planning retreat, maybe when you were even there, Janie, we did discuss short-term rentals on the one hand, and certainly, traffic is always something we're working on and trying to work with DOT to help solve. Thank you for those comments. Anybody else have comments for the council tonight? Yes, sir, would you step to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Jack Farrell, 21 Gray Abbey Drive, Pinehurst. I noticed on the agenda for the work session, there's an item about celebration of the Olmstead and Donald Ross birthdays. I'd like to make a couple of comments on that and offer another suggestion. I think we've got to be careful that we don't overstate, quite honestly, the involvement in Frederick Law Olmstead's involvement in the design and development of the Village of Pinehurst. If you go to any Olmstead book, you will not find Pinehurst mentioned anywhere, of course. And his involvement is speculative in some ways, at best. But regardless, I don't think it's a bad thing to celebrate Olmstead and his design, and his firm's design on our village and the plan. I think that's a wonderful thing to do. I just think we've got to be careful not to overstate where we are relative to Frederick Law Olmstead Senior, at least. The other thing on Donald Ross, Donald Ross was a distinguished citizen, obviously, for the six months a year that he would be in Pinehurst for the, for the 48 years that he was here from 1900 to 1948. However, I think we don't want to overstate that he had a lot to do with forming the village. He had little to do with forming the village. He had more to do with the development of golf course design and architecture, and I think that's to be celebrated, yes, agreed. But I think we've got to be careful that we don't overstate his involvement in developing the village. So I'm very concerned about that. More importantly, and the reason I'm standing here, is I'd like to offer a suggestion as not necessarily an alternative, but as an addition. With the coming of the Women's Open in, in the first week of June, there's going to be a great deal of attention on our area, as there already is. As a matter of fact, I think that's already been noted. I think this is an opportunity for the Village of Pinehurst and Pinehurst Resort, to an extent, is to celebrate the role of Pinehurst in championing women's golf. I don't think it's well-recognized or understood that women's golf was a major feature of this resort, starting in 2003 with the North-South Women's Open, which was only two years behind the Men's Open. And there's some, really some wonderful articles and wonderful pictures going back to 1903, actually, about women's golf in Pinehurst. And I think we could, we could make a lot of hay in advertising women's golf and Pinehurst, and how Pinehurst championed and supported women's golf over the years, and possibly use it to conduct tours in the village, along with some exhibits, possibly, demonstrating that involvement and support that we gave to women's golf over the years. I think that would be helpful and possibly drive some tourism downtown and some historic tourism, and I think it would be very useful. I think we have, we have a lot of material and a lot to offer in that respect. So I suggest, I know this is going to be a real staff issue. How many things can the staff do to celebrate? How many things can the staff celebrate in one year? But maybe if it's sequenced a little bit, as far as focusing on the women's golf, at least until the open happens, and then revert back to the Olmstead/Donald Ross focus, that might be, that might be useful. We don't want to consume staff with three different focuses on one time, at one time. I know this will be a considerable issue. So that's a suggestion. I think there's a lot to be gained there. I think there's, we have a lot to offer, we have a great story to tell. We have a lot of material. I know personally, you have a tremendous amount of material that's very interesting and useful, and I think would be very, very interested to visitors. So I offer that as a suggestion, not to add one more thing to your plate, but to offer an alternative in some respects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Very helpful thoughts. Any other public comments for the Village Council tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session?
I'll move that we adjourn the regular meeting and move to work session.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman, second by Pat Pizzola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, the regular meeting has ended. We'll commence the work session at 5:35.